Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for our monthly selectmen's meeting on July, uh, May 20th, 2013. With everyone, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a few announcements tonight. Uh, we want to thank all the town officials and town residents who attended this special and annual town meeting last Monday evening. The final approved and balanced FY14 budget can be found on the homepage of the town's website. And also, thank you to all who attended the preservation celebration last Friday afternoon on the grounds of the long-fell-known municipal center. Our thanks to Margaret Carroll and the other town employees who assisted with the preparations for this event. A reminder that the municipal offices will be closed next Monday, May 27th, in observance of Memorial Day. Copy of the 2012 Annual Town Report is still available at the town hall for no charge. And also, congratulations to our upcoming high school graduates. The board sends its best wishes to the class of 2013 of BBT, and on May 30th, and BMR on Friday, June 7th. And one last thing is just a reminder to the residents of town, uh, any elected position, whether it be a committee or a board, uh, the Board of Selectmen has no say in, um, on what they do or don't do. Uh, they do have to follow mass general law, um, but the Board of Selectmen, as I said, has no jurisdiction over these, um, elected positions in town. So, uh, and, you know, i.e. would be, uh, town clerk, um, building, I'm sorry, not building, highway surveyor, uh, and, uh, planning board, which is elected. So, in Board of Health, all elected positions, the Board of Selectmen only has jurisdiction over, uh, individuals who are appointed by us. So, I mean, that is all I have for announcements. Uh, next, we have approval of minutes and warrants, and I'm looking for a motion for May 6th, 2013, at 6:00 PM.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'm looking for a motion for May 13th, 2013, at 6:30 PM.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I do have warrants this evening.
Okay.
Uh, this is for the payroll for the period ending May 18th, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. I have the vendor warrant dated May 20th, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, and you'll note, um, that's high due to the Norfolk Aggie payment, as well as the, um, trash payment. And the last are for the payroll deductions, um, dated May 6th, and the amount of four thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty cents.
All right, motion to make a motion that we pay the payroll as red.
And all the other warrants as well?
Vendor.
Vendor warrant?
Yeah. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is that it, Helen? Okay, next, we have reports of town officials, and with us tonight is the Veterans Agent, Lincoln Barber, and the Electrical Inspector will not be here tonight, he's gonna reschedule. So, Lincoln, come right up. Good evening.
Good evening. I just went upstairs to get the sheet, and it's always in my mailbox, and I say, "Why did they waste all this paper?" And it's not there. So I don't know where I stand on my budget at this point. Um, I will say that at this point, we are writing regular checks to the tune of sixteen hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. That comes out to nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars annually. I think my budget at this point is twenty-five, as far as veterans' benefits are concerned. Um, that is not including any medical expenses, which are, it's sometimes quite substantial. So I'm going to tell you tonight that, uh, during the course of the year, I picked up a full-time veteran and I got rid of a full-time veteran, and I picked up a new full-time veteran. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year is not gonna work next year at this point in time. How much, uh, I don't know, I'd say we need to go back to therapy. We don't spend it, we don't spend it, but most of, um, all of the people that I speak with are senior citizens, and they have medical bills. And the one glowing light in all this is you do get seventy-five percent of that. Um, so I'm going to ask that when we, um, you know, go forward for next year, we probably oughta jack that up a little.
Lincoln, do you think we need to put something in for the special to get you through next year?
Well, we didn't change it, and I just got a new veteran that's, you know, they come, they say, "I need help," and I gotta help them, so, um, I would say yes, if there's a special coming up. And I apologize I missed the town meeting, but...
Well, I'm just thinking.
Wouldn't have gone on that warrant anyhow.
At least November, December, if it gets picked up halfway.
Yeah, and I'll have a better handle on it then, but, um, I just wrote a pretty big check for medical bills anyhow. I mean, we all know that I don't physically write the checks. Um, I would also say that, um, one of my, um, clients is somewhat disgruntled with the service that I've been rendering. They are used to dealing with another community, and they had, uh, a different financial arrangement as far as the ability to pay out benefits, and they were, um, able to give much prompter and, and more immediate service than the town of Millville. If anybody comes and wants to speak to the board, I'd be happy to come and meet, uh, with you and the individual veteran as the meeting arises. I have, I think made every effort I could to appease them and try and get them to work within our system, or, or me work within their system, but sometimes things just don't work out. At this point, I think they're happy, but I don't really know.
Okay.
Uh, there's an issue that I came to a meeting about six months ago, and the, um, gist of that was that every once in a while, there's people that fall through the cracks. And they are in all walks of life, but I'm only dealing with the veterans in the town of Millville. Uh, I've been doing this, uh, better part of ten years, and last winter was the first time I had somebody that I needed to render help to. Um, I explained at that previous meeting that other communities set up a fund, and I just went to a meeting in Lunenburg last week where I posed a question to twenty-five people, and they all had, um, pretty good ideas, but none of them pertain to Millville because they have resources that we don't. Most of them were private resources, i.e. the, um, VFW, or Veterans Council, or a very active local group that was willing to help out. At this point in time, we don't really have that in Millville. I know there's other towns that have, um, included some kind of, um, sign-off on the property tax bill, which is what I spoke about before, in which an individual paying their property tax can check a box and say, "Yes, I would like to donate a dollar or two," or whatever denomination they determine, "to a Veterans in Need Fund." Uh, and speaking with the town treasurer, they told me that, um, while they're offered the idea, it's difficult enough to compute the dollar values of checks written versus taxes owed as it is, without trying to separate out a dollar here and there for a veterans' payment. Entirely understandable, don't wanna complicate the situation. I would like the permission of the board to work with the treasurer and the accountant, and try and set up some kind of fund that is overseen by the town accountant. It is for the veterans of Millville. It, um, would be separate from the general account, and I don't know how to do that. And I guess it would be upon me, or the person that's a veterans' agent, to come up with some kind of a solicitation that can go on the television, on the cable channel, or be an additional thing in the envelope with your tax bill, or a separate mailing. I would have to work with Helen and, um, Lisa and Marilyn to make it happen. But I really think the time has come for such a thing. Uh, if it goes another eight years and nobody needs it, then, you know, it's sitting there for the next person that does. It could be something that only accrues, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks a year, or it could accrue fifteen hundred dollars a year. I think if it got to a point where, you know, everyone says, "Well, isn't that enough?" Then we could say, "Thank you very much," but, um, you know, in a rough winter, you can burn through a lot of money in a hurry trying to heat a house or put food on the table. So, it would be set up as transparent as possible, so that the, um, decision made on dispersing funds would, would be, um, within the auspices of the veterans' agent, but, uh, would get cleared through whoever you want to agree on, whether it's the accountant, whoever that may be, um, or this board, or, or the person that sits in that chair, I don't care. The one thing you, you must remember, and this is what I ran into this winter, is nobody gets to know any names except the guy sitting over here. So you don't get to make decisions based on the person, just the story and the need. And I ran into a problem this winter where, when, when I couldn't go any further than that, I couldn't get any money, so that has to be cleared to the people of Millville up front, and to anybody that wants to be involved.
So, just so I understand, this is, um, the portion that the town allows are those that qualify through your, um, I don't even know what you call it. I know you have to put in all the numbers and all the information.
Chapter 115.
Thank you. Um, so this fund would be those that don't need it, but they're still in need. They don't meet the town's funds.
They don't meet the criteria for the, chapter 115 funds are determined, the state has a list of, uh, there's a form I can show you that says, "This is how much I make, this is how much my rent is, or my mortgage is, this is how many children we have, and what our utility bills are, et cetera. And this is my income, this is what I have for a pension, or whatever money's coming in." Um, and then the state determines how much aid they're willing to give. And, uh, even when you qualify for aid, you know, I've got some numbers here, none of them are, you know, we're ranging from three hundred dollars to five hundred and forty dollars a month, roughly. Um, none of those people are able to go out to dinner and go to Foxwoods and go to the movies, I'm telling you. They live very plain and frugally to get by. But I ran into somebody this winter that, due to circumstances beyond their control and the way the court systems work, um, didn't qualify for a dime of, of heating assistance, didn't qualify for a dime of chapter 115 funds, and the people that I told the story to all said, "Boy, they need some help, and they're worth helping." But it wasn't coming from anywhere that, um, and I tried, that I could access, so...
So that donation fund would help those that don't qualify under 115, or would...
Exactly.
Okay. So you wouldn't get 115 and...
Well, the idea is go 115 first, and the heating oil, you go to, to Smock up in Framingham first, and there's, you know, there are other places to go, there's individual, um, churches that help out, and there's private groups that help out, and it's the veterans' agent's job to reach out to all them first. And believe me, um, I got heating oil this winter for somebody, I had to prove, and I ended up faxing into Boston about sixteen pages. This is what we've done to try and get help, nobody will help. Boston wrote a check one time for five hundred bucks.
How about the American Legion that started up again in Millville?
Um, well, I'm not gonna discuss them at this time in an open meeting.
I'm just asking if we've asked them for help?
I, I asked them for help.
Okay, that's all?
I certainly did.
Okay.
I would, I would very much like to have them on board in the future, town.
Okay.
Maybe we can get there someday.
Yep.
Didn't work out this time.
Okay.
So, I don't have a vehicle yet, obviously, before you render, uh, a yes vote, you wanna know all the particulars, but I'm asking your permission to go forward and try and set something up, that I can come back here and present with, uh, the approval of the treasurer and the accountant, this is how we're gonna do it, and this is where the money's gonna go.
What if we, um, Helen, what if we sent out an envelope specifically for the veterans with the tax bills?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do? So, that's clearly for them, there's no way...
Yeah, just an extra...
I don't even put that in the tax bill.
No?
Yeah, I don't know what you can do.
You can do that, but you'd have to understand, if you're not sitting in the treasurer's office, people aren't gonna use that envelope.
Right.
Even if you say right on it, "You must put your donation in this envelope," they're not going to.
You know, I don't wanna spend money on envelopes either.
They just don't, right.
But if I could take one of these and print three forms on it, run it through a paper cutter, and stick that in there, and, you know what, maybe people don't understand the first year, and it goes up on cable and it, and it helps explain.
Mm-hmm.
But after a while, uh, people catch on, and there's a small trickle, and it goes in there. You start somewhere and you see where it goes. I'm, I'm not looking to spend any of the town's money on this. The idea is to get, get the word out to the people, and there's a lot of, of really good people in Millville, there's a lot of veterans in Millville, and hopefully, uh, as time goes by, we get enough money in there that the next person that comes down the line that needs help, we're able to write a check.
Other towns are doing this, yes?
Other towns, a lot of towns are doing it.
Are you in touch with them on how they're doing it?
Well, I, like I say, up in Lunenburg, I spoke with people, and, um, one agent said to me, "Yeah, we have this very active in town, it's all run by the Veterans Council, and I don't have any say over it, I'm just the, uh, the point man, and they have six individual veterans groups in that town, and they all communicate with each other, and they all work to help veterans, and it sounds like a nice place to be if you're a veteran." I said, "Well, that's great, but that's not gonna work in my town." And I heard four or five examples, all of which, um, sounded great, but they weren't gonna apply to the town of Millville, because of our specific circumstances geographically and, and with the groups that are active and not active in town. Um, and the, I first heard about this from a guy that was doing the job in the town of Hingham. I haven't looked up Hingham on the, you know, the state website, but I, I think they're probably in the top twenty as far as affluence is concerned. So, and they have a very active Veterans Council there, a lot of those Cape communities do. For somebody to check off a box and throw an extra twenty-five bucks into the veterans' fund, he told me he was working on a five-figure fund, and it was up to close to forty thousand dollars. I, I, you know, I'd be happy to have four thousand dollars, right? I don't need forty.
Yeah.
But I, I don't have the, the population that Hingham has. And it's very important to me that, that people in Millville have real faith in the fact that this money isn't going into the general fund, that it's not being used to, you know, plow streets, or turn the lights on in the town hall, and that whoever is in charge of dispersing it is, is somebody they have faith in it's going in the right place. There just, there's no names involved.
Okay. Well, I think if, uh, I think if I, if somebody came to town hall and handed the collector a check, said, "I'd like to make this donation to the town for a certain budget line item,"
Yes, that in the budget.
Right, if it's a donation, we would automatically open a new account.
Right.
Yeah, and we would just call it Veterans Donations.
Yeah, it has to be, uh, it can't be part of the, look, it's got nothing to do with the town of Millville, other than people live here.
Right, no, I know.
And it can't go into the general expense fund.
Right, no, it has to go into the veterans'.
But it has to be overseen by the government in order to give it credibility.
Right.
That's the important thing.
So it'd be a matter of creating a line item under the veterans?
No, it's under the donation budget.
Under the, and then specifically for veterans on that donation line?
Just for veterans. Or, or their, you know, dependents.
Yeah.
Widows, et cetera.
Yes, so...
Believe me, when you come talk to me, you have to bear your soul.
Oh, no, I...
And you have to prove who you are and your story, and I check it all out, or whoever's sitting in my seat, doesn't have to be me.
It's too bad it's not.
I'm not gonna do this guy forever.
It's too bad it's not.
You have to anticipate somebody's gonna come on later on and do this job, and however it's set up, it, it's still set up to protect the fund.
Mm-hmm. So, it's not quite as easy as getting a EBT card, is what you're saying?
Nothing comes easy out of my mouth.
I'll probably get in trouble for saying that, but...
Um, well, I think it's worth exploring, I think it's, that you, you're looking for us to make a motion so that you can just start to explore this with Marilyn and get this...
I'm gonna make it happen, I just want you to say, "Go ahead and do it."
Yeah.
And I'll come back with something that you think is bulletproof enough that it'll be easy to say yes.
I make a motion to allow, um, Lincoln to start to explore the possibilities of the veteran line item donation, um, process.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion on... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's pretty much it, what I have for veterans.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
My wife tells me there was a blurb on the TV, "You're looking for an Assistant Building Inspector." I've applied for that job, I've interviewed for the job. If you're looking for somebody, I'm still interested. If you're not interested in me, just let me know, and I won't ask anymore.
Yeah. Well, we, we basically are gonna let the building inspector pretty much, like the chief, police chief does, you know, come up with some, somebody, um, a man or a woman, and say, "Look, this person I believe would be fit for the job," and then we'll discuss it further, and then, but we're gonna go on the recommendation of the appointed, uh, head of that department, so, because...
Once again, I'll go speak to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I'll be back.
Thank you.
How do you like your job? It's time to warm up. You'll get hot before you know it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lincoln. Yeah, I don't believe anything's been printed on cable that we're seeking an assistant.
I saw, I didn't see that.
It's not printed on cable?
I saw it somewhere, maybe it was on here.
Maybe it was at the end of the town meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Davis made an announcement of all the vacations.
That's, it was the town meeting, yes. Okay. Um, pick his out. I think at this point, the building inspector said, "He, he's got too many animals at home, he can't go on vacation, so he's always here." So he didn't really have a need for an assistant. If he did, he would call a neighboring town to...
Right, yeah, that's what he...
Which is fine, that's, that's another person we don't have to pay. So, anyway, first public forum?
You're both going on today.
Mrs. Leisure is here, I propose disclosure, she, uh, Mrs. Leisure approached me on Friday to indicate to me that she was surprised that the landscaping budget in the, in the senior center, uh, was cut by a thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And I really didn't have an explanation, except that we discussed it mutually with the, uh, with the finance committee, and we settled on a number that was equivalent to the total of the library.
Right.
Um, as a follow-up, she indicated to me that the, uh, the grounds at the senior center looked, uh, pretty raggedy.
That's putting it gently.
I, I checked that out yesterday, and I, I have to agree, but, you know, it's gonna take more than five hundred or a thousand dollars to, to get it up to speed. The bank in the back is, is all eroded, uh, the, there is, there are low spruce there that, you know, you can see the, the ground cover. So it looks ratty, and, and the point here was that, um, in the discussions, it was that that facility could be used for rental or fund, uh, you know, as a revenue stream. And, uh, the, you know, having it in that condition might turn off some people wanting to rent that facility. Uh, I also indicated to Mrs. Leisure that, uh, you know, she, she indicated to me that she, she was unable to, um, attend town meeting this year, but I, I indicated that in the past, that, you know, the, well, number one, the budget was posted online, so the final budget, and there was a public hearing on it, uh, five days before the public meeting, before the town meeting. So, with, with all that said, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Leisure here, I believe, looking, oh, they're gonna, on their own, on June 1st, they're gonna be doing a volunteer kind of thing to, kind of pick up what they're gonna...
Semi-volunteer. I mean, you know, he's semi-volunteering, as are my two boys.
Tom, go on.
And about five of their friends. So right now, it looks like Cladet and you, um, my husband, myself, my two boys, and probably about five of their friends, so, and, um, I'm giving them pizza and water for the work that they will do that day. Um, but I, when I looked at the budget, I didn't realize the whole process in town and how the budget works, but like I said to Mr. Opoza, I couldn't make it the night of the town meeting, um, or else I, I would've gone. But when I look at it, if you look at the senior center, and you're trying to create an environment where we can drive more of a revenue stream from there, there's no one that's gonna rent that place when you drive up and look at it. It's got piss-poor curb appeal, and I'm sorry, but it does. So, you know, we're trying to increase the programs that are inside, but if I'm gonna try and get someone to host a baby shower there, or a birthday party there, or something along that line, they're just not gonna do it the way it looks. Um, and so, you know, Cladet and I were there for bingo one night, and started really looking at the outside, um, and then I dragged my husband up to look at it, um, and said, you know, "What, what do we need in looking at there? I know that we have some hoses, I know we have sprinklers, um, that we can use, but it's pretty much all crabgrass." Um, so we were looking at, you know, mulch and putting some flowers out and stuff like that, and really cleaning up that whole front hill where you come in, it's got a very low, creeping shrub, um... It's got a very low creeping shrub, so, you know, the boys can get in there and dig that all out, but five hundred dollars is not going to do it. You know, it's, it's just not, when you look at it. So that's why I wanted to come and ask for, you know, the thousand back, and, you know, negotiate from there if I have to.
Well, I, I believe unfortunately, the budget was set, and I don't believe that we can get money from anywhere now without another town meeting vote.
Right. The Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen before June thirtieth can authorize a budget transfer, if you'd like to consider that.
If you have any, if you have money left in any of your lineups, it can be transferred.
From any departmental budget.
From any department, yeah.
I mean, we're going to do this on June first, so that we can get it done, and hopefully start to rent it out. That's our piece. But, again, I don't think anybody's gonna rent it, looking like it does.
But I would recommend, if you come back for, for money or transfer, do you have a finite plan, how you're gonna spend that money? You know, specifically. You know, if you're doing it on mulch, you're gonna have someone.
So who takes care of, we must have people that take care of the grounds here, and down to the fire station in Mead, how's all that?
I know Steve Frum, in the past, used to drive his tractor around the corner and cut it on his own.
Right.
But it's literally, I mean, it's, you have a building that's less than six years old, or just at six years old, it's not been maintained well. You know, you have a landscaping piece that is null and void there. I mean, you've got no money to do anything there, so.
It needs a lot of love right now.
It, it really does, and when I look at it, you know, trying to get the Senior Center to be less of a burden to the town, and more of something that can sustain itself, you know, myself and the board, we're working hard at getting that done, programs and things like that, trying to get the seniors to come back, but when you look at the outside of it, it's like, does anybody really care? That's your first impression when you look at it. And I know when we, I know when we went through the budgets, you know, it was a fight. It was a big fight, with us trying to just deal with the whole van issue, and getting the people on the board beyond that, and realizing we don't have the money for the van, but when you look at it, I don't think, it's, it's not a lot of money, it will carry through, it'll be clean, we can, you know, I can drag the boys in next year to help in that, but, you know, Ed looked at it as far as mulching that we would need and that, I mean, we had even talked about doing those things, woodchips, because we could pretty much get those for next to nothing, but then we worried about ants and that that are in the woodchips, and getting into the building, and, you know, then having a Board of Health issue, so.
The mulch is somewhat treated for that.
Yeah. So that's what we were looking at, is how to do that, but, you know, even, I mean, you've got, if you look at the building, it's pure crabgrass.
The, you know, this didn't just happen in a year. It's been neglect for years, and to get a jumpstart on something like that, it's not gonna be pennies. You know, you're looking at dollars. You know, if it was all done, and you could just keep up with it, then yeah, you can cut, you know, cut back, but the initial, you know, there's gotta be something.
Okay.
It looks like to me that it's just been done when the building was put there, but it doesn't look like there's really been anything done since then, was there?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge. Other than the grass cutting?
We, after it was built, we did the, all the post lighting to light up the parking lot, and the sign lighting, and stuff like that, and then a few flowers here and there, but other than that, I don't remember any additional landscape.
When we started looking around in the, in the grounds above the backside of the Senior Center, we, I didn't know, but I guess was donated from, from the Boy Scouts. And the, but nobody's kept it up. You know, so all that work of the Boy Scouts is gone.
And all you have to pay for is the materials. I mean, seriously, we have, we have the workups. I mean, we've got big boys who are gonna work all day, and they'll be there to help us, and it's gonna cost pizza and water.
Do you know what your, what your, do we have Marilyn's printout? I know Lincoln said he was looking for it, this week's printout? Like they were saying, to look at your electricity, look at your heat, like, you know, maybe one of those has enough money in there that we can just transfer down for your landscaping? You're able to do that?
I can use that, twenty-six hundred, that's for the van, something or other in there.
Cause we budgeted for the van last time.
A van's, van something was in there, van coordinator, something like that, it's twenty, twenty-six hundred dollars is the amount I can save.
How many yards of mulch do you think?
Oh, ask him.
Well, every time we talk, it's, you'll hear that. I'm figuring probably four?
Oh.
And that's not with us doing, we weren't doing the back. We were just gonna do the front, to the front of the building and the side.
To look at the building.
We weren't even gonna, not even do the back yet.
Do you have your friends in place, your Senior Center friend, it's like that, group that can call the local landscapers, call those local people to say, "Can you donate us this, can you?"
I've already called Dominic Afonso to see if he will donate, and I've not heard, I've not heard back from him. The gentleman who owns the yard, we know that through Brian Malali, we can get a reduced rate from him on what he'll give us. He won't give us a full donation, but he'll give us a reduced rate on anything that we buy from him. So we've talked about that, and then, like I said, we're donating the eight to ten boys that are gonna be there doing the work.
I mean, in front of this Senior Center, there's no grass, and what's there needs to be dug up and replanted. So you're looking at some mulch, some seeds.
You might wanna check with Ken's Landscaping, I know they've donated in the past to various things, they're located on Lincoln Street, so the friends group could kind of look into them and see, you know, they might be able to, to do something.
Who'd you say you get the mulch from, I or you?
The yard? The one forty-six I?
I might have some.
He's one of the ones that we had called to talk to, because Brian does some work with him already, so we went there to talk to him.
I might have some. I'll find out tomorrow.
So we can utilize what's in the budget and transfer it from another line item?
You can, if it's from, it's from another expense line item, you don't have to do anything.
Same group.
Yeah, as long as it's an expense, town account will automatically take it out of wherever there's excess. If it's a salary line item, and you need to transfer to expenses, then you need to fill out a budget transfer form.
Yeah, it looks like the van driver's salary.
Is that the one that was twenty-six hundred?
Well, it was budgeted last year at twenty, oh, no, transportation coordinator, twenty-six hundred, that's what.
That's the money I was thinking.
That's what we paid to Blackstone, and we probably, is it still at twenty-six hundred?
Yep.
So you just need to fill out a budget transfer form, and both the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen would need to approve it.
I've got a question, though, you do all this work, all the sweat, get the thing looking halfway decent, how you gonna make, who's gonna maintain it?
We will.
We're gonna have to.
We will, who else is going to do it?
If they raise some money, John, they'll, they'll have money to do that, right?
Once it's brought up to.
No, they're talking about raising money just for material.
Well, you're not, kind of gig.
They're not raising money for labor costs.
Once it's all together, basically, it's gonna be trimming, grass cutting, and do some watering. Right now, there's nothing there, there's nothing there to, to work.
The five hundred a year is gonna cover routine maintenance. You need, you need a jumpstart.
Right, we, we definitely need a jumpstart, and that's why we put the budget at fifteen hundred, cause we knew we needed to do that, and that's not with us doing a lot of curly flowers or anything like that. It's truly like you drive up the side, and you've got a rut on the side, you go down the out, you got another rut there, so trying to kind of pack that up and make it look nicer. But, you know, we'll do the maintenance. Right now, we have, you know, the senior club, that is, you know, there, they're not as active as they were, but we're also trying to grow the programming there, and have more of a wellness focus, and things that the seniors actually want to do. You know, trying to find an artist, to convince someone to teach art classes for them, things like that, that they wanna do and come back and do. But it's still working against some of that old negativity that's out there, and just trying to bring people back, so, you know.
Oh, I understand that.
I was walking to the side of the building, there's a horseshoe pet that's overgrown with weeds, you can't even tell what it is.
We will get a lot accomplished that day, we just need to be able to pull it, so if we can pull it from that, I have to fill out the budget transfer form, or who does? Where would I even find one of those?
On the, on the website, if you go to the Finance Committee's webpage, it should be right at the bottom.
Okay. Okay. And so then I have to bring that to the Finance Committee to sign off on, and then the Board of Selectmen?
Actually, if you just get it to me, I can, I can get it to both for you.
Okay. Okay. So, if I put out any of my own money then, to get this all done, what do I need to get that reimbursed? Just the receipts.
And the town does not pay sales tax, so you wanna make sure you give the vendor a tax exempt certificate, because you will not be reimbursed for any sales tax that you do pay.
So, obviously, I know your work, so just come Wednesday night and get that, right? All right, so if I produce this mulch, where would I have it dumped?
Right up by the shed.
Okay.
That driveway, you can't even tell it's a driveway.
Yeah, nobody parks over there.
It's on the right side.
It's on the right side, way back.
Yeah, nobody parks over there, okay.
That's why it's out of the way, if we use all of it, great, if we have a little bit left, which I don't think we will, but we're going from there.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
Start.
It's a little positive. Take what I can get.
Well, I'll take what I can get, like I said to Mr. Opoza, I'm, you know, I, I do budgets all the time in the private sector, I'm not used to somebody changing my budget without letting me know, so I understand I'm new to the whole municipal stuff, but that won't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Next is, well, that's it for, nobody else for public forum? Okay. Next, it's correspondence, I, well, I kinda did it during the announcements, that was about elected positions. So that's done. Everybody got this from Timothy Ryan McGough, well, from Senator Moore, Timothy McGough? That's, this is something to the whole town, correct? This is just?
No, it was just to the six of us.
Okay. And we do have a regular meeting that night, so whoever wants to go, just remember, we have to leave probably at quarter or seven. If we all go, we don't have to post it.
I am gonna post it anyway, because you are gonna be making a resolution.
Yeah, okay. All right, and that's it for correspondence. We have appointments and resignations, which is two, and we have council on aging, which is Joan Carter, effective May ninth, two thousand and thirteen. And the other resignation is from the Board of Assessors, Gail McAdon, and that's May sixth, two thousand and thirteen. So I'm looking for a motion to accept both of these resignations.
I make the motion to accept the resignation of Gail McAdon for the Counsel, Assessors, and Joan Carter, Council on Aging.
All second now. All right, I would like to thank both individuals for the, the commitment that they made to the town, and for the hard work that, that they did do, in the time served, and it is most appreciated. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get a letter out to them. Yes.
The Executive Secretary's Report. Oh, we have Diane Lockwood, sorry about that. We have a cer- certificate of, of appointment, city, the town of Millville, in accordance with the requirements, requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section nineteen A, as, as most recently amended, I certify that Diane Lockwood was appointed to the office of the Assistant Town Clerk for the town of Millville, effective April first, two thousand and thirteen, for the term of office expiring on April first, two thousand and sixteen, and the said clerk has qualified by taking the oath of office. So I guess we're looking for authorization for me to sign?
Exactly, yep.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. And that, with that, we have the Executive Secretary's Report.
Actually, that was the first thing I was going to present to you on my report, and the only one other thing is I just wanted to thank the chairman for refurbishing the Longfellow Municipal Center sign, and we greatly appreciate it, it looks great, and everybody was thrilled to see that on Friday, so it looks dynamite, so we thank you very much for your hard work.
You're most welcome. Enjoy, you know, like I said, it is a hobby, I enjoy doing it, it's actually peaceful, a peaceful little project I like to do, so.
And that's, that's it, I have nothing else.
All right, any old business?
I have one thing, at the last meeting, the Veterans Memorial Park had inquired about presentation of a plaque. I've put some feelers out around the individual, to friends of the individual, and they kind of had the same feeling as I had, but couldn't or wouldn't say one way or the other, which way the, they should go. One of the suggestions was, was to have the parade committee work with the Veterans Memorial Park, whether it's a direct question to the individual they wanna present about their feelings, but to have the parade committee, cause they're the ones who sets the ceremony and the agenda for that day, to work with the, the Veterans Memorial Park, and I thought that was a pretty good resolution.
Okay.
Rather than us telling them what they have to do?
Yeah.
That they've been working on this parade, and, and that, you know, they'll have to kind of figure out how they wanna do that in a manner that's appropriate.
Okay.
So, that was, that was what, the information I got back, that was the overall consensus.
I'm just wondering if, if the veterans even have a plaque made yet or not.
I thought it said in the minutes that they had made it.
So, I know they were discussing making one.
I don't recall if they have it, yeah, I'm not sure.
But that was just one of the, that was kind of the feel of it.
Yeah.
And it was kind of the same thought process that I had, that the person may not want that venue to be that place for.
Yeah, I, I think I remember her, her saying of some, about something different, but wishing to keep Memorial Day strictly for veterans, you know, retired, active, and, and deceased.
Yep.
It's, it's their day, you know?
So that's just, that's just what I got back, so I don't wanna get to the parade committee and the Veterans Memorial to decide how that's gonna look.
Yeah.
I don't wanna step on the parade committee toes either, they're the ones who facilitate that whole program.
And it wouldn't really be that hard to, to organize a, a special day down at the park just for that.
Anyway.
We've done it for the plaques, we just did it last past Friday over here.
Yep, no, I agree. Just recording.
And I think I would like to have it on its own day, because it would be more, I think it would be more meaningful to, to the person receiving the award. Okay. I'll, I'll call, I'll contact one of the Veterans Park people, and see what, how they wanna proceed with that, have them touch base with the parade committee as well, so. But I don't think there's time for that now, anyway, with it being, what, six days away? Okay. Any other old business? New business, we have one seventy-five Central Street, which is a property, which is the power lines that run parallel, and it's one seventy-five Central Street, but it's the property behind the duplexes, running parallel with, with Providence Road. We have some earth removal going on, and.
If I could just make a disclosure, that I did talk to these people, I do live in the area, I have visible sight. I was asked about the property, I emailed, as you can tell on the first page, through the town website.
Yep.
Just as, for the permit and what it looked like, and I was gonna pick it up for the neighbors. And then the second piece is the email that was received back from Helen, in regards to the town's past actions. Um, and then the second piece is the email that was received back from Helen in regards to the town's past actions. Um, and then the neighbors went door to door, just listing kind of the things off the, you know, what they, what they've seen. What their concerns are and had some of the, um, people who were directly above that property, put their concerns in paper. So just so you know that I'm, I'm involved, I'm a neighbor, but, you know, I also wanted to try to get the information for them.
Okay. It, it looks like because of agricultural laws in, uh. They're protected, uh, basically from not ne- not having to, um. Fall under our earth removal bylaws in town. And we were instructed by town council, uh, back in two thousand and ten, uh, not to. Stop them from doing, doing this, but, uh. So I don't know which.
Mister Chairman, I have a lot of questions. You know, if someone's, uh, proposing an agricultural use. There should be a plan in place to understand specifically what's gonna happen to that site. I think that site is being used as a sand pit, I, I looked at it, uh, yesterday. And, uh, they're making money. They're not converting it for agr- agricultural use. And the other thing, the other concern I had was what's gonna happen to those towers?
Well, back in October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, those towers, which actually belonged to National Grid. National Grid advised the applicant to cease and desist any earth removal on this property. Because they were, their concerns was, was, um, eroding around the footings for these, uh, extremely large towers. Which, as you know, could result in, in a pretty serious accident. So National Grid had concerns back then. And you're right, there should be some sort of a plan, whether it's gonna be a horse farm, a cow farm, a, a tree farm, uh.
There is an actual plan on file. It says farm, farm stand and greenhouse. And that's what it's, I can certainly show to you, we've got it in the earth removal files, so.
But there's no projected date of this actual.
I, that I don't even.
And how large is that greenhouse?
I've never seen a greenhouse or.
Nine acres worth?
On the property, have you, Jeff?
No.
Or a farm stand?
No.
So I guess the next, the, the next course of action for the board would be to authorize me to have the earth removal agent, who is also the building inspector. Um, do another site visit, you know, I can give him copies of the plan and all of the backup information and have him do a site visit. And additionally, I can contact National Grid again and have them send another representative over.
And the other issue I would have, there, there are nine acres, nine point three whatever, six whatever. But the total value of those nine acres assessed is like ninety-seven thousand dollars. Ninety-seven thousand dollars. Favorable assessment, I think.
What's that?
I think that was a favorable assessment, but.
Slightly, on, on someone's part.
Wow.
Do they not have the frontage? I haven't seen a map.
It might, yeah, there might not be fronts to build.
Whether they'll have to later go for an easement or something.
So it was, might have been abated as, uh, as unusable land.
Depending on their frontage.
What land is another one?
You know?
I think in my conversations with the neighbors is that there's been a variety of, um, things said to them in regards to what's going there. From a barn with animals to a, um, a blueberry farm, a tree farm. Um, what was the other thing? Oh, a storage unit, like similar to Quaker, um, that was one thing. So each neighbor kind of, as I think he walked along the street, was like, oh no, he's building this, oh no, he's building this, depending on when they went out there to talk to the individual. Um, DEP did receive a complaint online because there's tanks out there, you may wanna check or have our building inspector check. But the fire department did, eh, cause there's tanks with oil, I guess it was deemed vegetable oil, but it's marked diesel. So, um. So, you know, and I know they said that the assessors map may have had some wetlands marked, but there's no hay bales and there was a drainage pipe installed. So I think we're looking at a variety of committees, but I think we need to start somewhere, whether it be our building inspector. I, I just think there's, I think there's a lot going on and, um, and some of the concerns was that the question's like, where's your property line? Cause the trees are coming down and people don't exactly know where their property line is, cause those houses are, been there for twenty years and. Never had to worry about their back property line, but now it's creeping up to there and nobody knows kinda where's that line. And that's, I think, kinda spurred the concerns, along with the work hours, you know, before seven o'clock on a Saturday. You know, different things like that, or about seven o'clock on Saturdays, you know, I think that's kinda what spearheaded, people started talking. And the, on the neighborhood conversing about it, so I think we need to at least find out all of those things.
Anything else on that, on that one? Next. Next we have the fire station number two lease.
Yes, and Chief Landry does apologize, he had hoped to be here this evening to discuss this with the board, um, however, he, um. Unfortunately had a death in the family today, so was unable to be here.
Can we table this, the chief is here?
Sure.
I, I, in case the board has questions to this and that, at least he can answer them, he's been doing all the legwork on it.
Well, no, he hasn't, um.
Or whatever.
He just wanted to be present to discuss it. Um, well, I had mentioned to the board at the last, uh, posted meeting, which I think was the evening of the town meeting. I met with Mister Frost and he gave us three options. I did check with the insurance company, none of those three options will work for us as far as getting the insurance on the building. So the last option was for Mister Frost to get the insurance himself. However, in doing so, he would need to increase our lease by the amount of whatever that premium is, which was estimated at about sixteen hundred dollars. Um, so in speaking with the chief today, um, the chief did call Mister Frost and confirmed everything that I had already told him. And the chief said, you know, please relay to the board that there, we have no other option, I need the building and we're gonna have to pay it.
And that couldn't be a portion to, are you saying?
Mister Frost would not negotiate that at all, um, I was told, as was the chief, that if we didn't pay the entire premium, we would need to be evicted.
How does that fall in our lease agreement, or the eviction, the evicted part of it?
Sixteen hundred for the year, right?
An additional sixteen hundred on top of, I think it's fifty-one or fifty-three hundred now a year.
And our lease is up in June thirtieth? And we tend to sign for three years or a year?
They're three-year leases, but after the first year, we have, um, an out clause built into the contract.
So the alternative would be to keep those trucks outside, right, someplace?
Brand new truck?
Yeah, I don't think the chief would consider that an option.
You get the tanker in there and you have, uh, engine one.
It's the engine, that's the concern.
Engine one is still almost a little.
Did the, uh, chief wanna talk to us?
It can't be outside.
Not really, I think he just wanted to emphasize that we really didn't have a choice, um, and he was, you know, supporting going along with the new lease.
I'm like, I, I, I agree with the chief, but I'd rather not vote tonight. I'd rather just put it on to our next meeting so that we can just, um, digest it, think about it. And make sure that we're not missing a piece, I, I don't always like to vote the first time, I just. Not that I'm against it, I just, I just wanna make sure we have, that we've thought of everything.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
So the table?
Uh, election warrant is the next new business. That's for the special election.
Correct, and this was prepared by the assistant town clerk. Again, I remind the board that the executive secretary nor the board of selectmen is responsible for preparing election warrants, that is solely the responsibility of the town clerk. So you'd be signing three originals.
Helen, did you, um, happen to check this against previous ones, just to make sure it has everything?
Um, I looked it over quickly, um, I don't, nothing jumped out at me, but I'm certainly not gonna say.
I'm sure they use a template, I'm sure they use a template, I'm sure they use a template, I just wanna make sure.
Final public forum.
Yep, we just need a vote on the, um.
Vote to sign the special election warrant.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, final public forum, anyone? Okay, so, uh, before we go any further, we are going to, uh, leave this regular meeting. Only to enter executive session under Mass General Law, section thirty A, subsection twenty-one A, part two. To contract negotiations with a non-union personnel, uh, so motion to do, and then only to. At the end of the executive session, to return into regular meeting only through adjournment. So a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and our next regular meeting will be June third, two thousand and thirteenth, at seven P M at the Longfellow Municipal Center.